Human Resources and Veterans Services Committee to order at six fifty-five. Council's President, Council Tavares, and Council Waterman. From the docket of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to transfer six thousand dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one-one-five-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero. Personnel salary and wages full-time in overlap and training for the new benefits coordinator.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. Basically, we have one person retiring that handles the benefits coordinator, and so there's going to be some training involved, and this is just to take care of that. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three-zero. That's all for Human Resources Veterans and Human Services Committee. I call for the adjournment at six fifty-five.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three-zero. We are adjourned.
Let me call this meeting of the municipal council to order at six fifty-six. Please join me for a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no public hearings this evening, so I would entertain a motion to go into Committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are now in Committee of the whole, and as a reminder to all speakers, Committee of the whole, each speaker is allotted a time limit of four minutes. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the council? Mr. Carr, good evening.
Good evening. All right, guys. You ready for this? Good evening, President Delicio, Mayor DeSimone, Councilwoman Sawyer, Councilwoman Foa, and the members of the Attleboro City Council. Thank you for reinstating my remote access tonight. After eighteen months of full participation, then a sudden revocation in a federal complaint I filed pro se on October sixth, it's progress, and I'm grateful. But as a disabled resident verified by the SSA, I'm here to expose the facts to you and the public. With elections looming, voters need the truth. This wasn't an accident. It was a pattern of illegal actions showing failures in compliance and accountability. It took my lawsuit again to force this fix. In December of twenty-three, Mayor DeSimone granted my ADA Title II accommodation personally, approving the Zoom link for me to join from Florida. I participated fully, advocating transparently. That year, the city locked in an eighty-seven-thousand-dollar bond grant swearing under penalty of perjury to zero ADA or Section five oh four violations. By twenty-twenty-five, after my public records request on irregularities from Councilwoman Sawyer around the Paragon redevelopment plan, my access seemingly vanished. No notice, no hearing. The link died. ADA Coordinator Bill McDonough admitted it was just a conversation with no records. That's not oversight, it's a violation. Revoking without due process, illegal under the ADA, breaching the grant, perjury risk on state funds, no paper trail, scoliation to dodge accountability, then retaliation. City civil listener, and this guy's a moron, Peter Mello twisted Judge Burton's twenty-four dismissal, as though it erased my disability. Despite doctor's notes in my SSA award, they demanded more proof, and the mayor blocked my phone number, cutting contact. I believe she's actually directed City Hall staff to ignore my calls too. Silencing of constituents, another illegal violation. They bet a disabled guy in Jacksonville was easy to blow off. That's harassment, ADA discrimination, retaliation for merely asking for my rights, merely asking for my rights. October fourteenth, pre-service, you huddled for eighty-two minutes in executive session citing my case. Councilwoman Foa suggested changing remote rules. Coincidence? Under MCRA, that's coercion, intimidating a citizen for speaking. No analysis, no transparency, just spite. October fifteenth, Mayor texts, she cannot engage, then blocked me. October sixteen, Bill McDonough states access restored, but only after my filing. This risks one-point-five-million dollars in liability named in my suit for disability
One minute remaining, Mr. Carr.
Retaliation and due process breaches. But it's bigger than that. If officials question federal judges and agencies, hide records, hold secret sessions, block calls, and harass over requests despite one person, what happens when it's about taxes, schools, or the police? If they'll break oaths and conspire here, imagine when it's a real threat to their power. Voters demand that council release the executive minutes. The crime fraud exception demands it. Produce my revocation documents.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Carr.
Reassess your knowledge of my October second, fourteenth, and sixteenth requests. Settle fairly, a court awaits. Citizens pick leaders to comply without a shove, not once forcing a disabled resident to sue the government to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Do we have anyone else to speak in front of the council or Committee of the whole? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to arise from Committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we have arisen from Committee of the whole. We will now go into a reading of the may's communication.
So.
Dear Municipal Council, I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Schools David Sawyer regarding the following donations. Two items to the athletic department at the high school. A Bosu home balance trainer with an estimated value of one-hundred-forty dollars for the weight room, and a lacrosse bounce back with an estimated value of one-hundred-seventy dollars for the lacrosse program from Darby Sawyer. Backpacks and school supplies with an estimated value of one-thousand dollars from KAC Logistics Amazon to the Studley Elementary School. School supplies with an estimated value of one-hundred-fifty dollars from Saint Gregory the Theologian Greek Orthodox Church, from their two-thousand-twenty-five school supply collection to the Attleboro Public Schools. In accordance with Section one-dash-twelve of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro.
City property and claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding temporary assignment of duties for Senior Animal Control Officer Butch Kiefer. During the timeframe of May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, and June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, one of our animal control officers was out on a medical leave. During that timeframe, the department was left with only two animal control officers. In the past, all animal control employees were eligible for overtime. During the job reclassification plan, which became effective on January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, it was determined that the Senior Animal Control Officer was no longer eligible for overtime, and the on-call duties would be split between the other two animal control officers on staff. During that time period, Senior Animal Control Officer Kiefer responded to four on-call incidents, and had the duties of covering for sick and vacation time for three additional days. In total, Senior Animal Control Officer Kiefer worked an additional thirty-six-point-five hours beyond his typical work schedule from May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five through June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Accordingly, it's been determined that Senior Animal Control Officer Kiefer's change in work schedule for this period of time meets the criteria of Article twenty-two, Section two, of the Personnel Rules and Regulations for Exempt and Unrepresented Employees. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer one-thousand dollars from account one-two-nine-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-three-one-zero-zero, Animal Control Holiday Vacation Sick OT, to account one-two-nine-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-nine-nine-two-two, Animal Prior Year Article twenty-two stipend.
Human Resources and Veterans Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Schools David Sawyer regarding math materials that Attleboro Public Schools would like to surplus. There was no interest from any of the departments. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to declare the attached list of math materials as surplus and available for disposition.
City property and claims, please.
For your information, please know that the city was notified by the Department of Revenue on October tenth, two thousand twenty-five, of our general fund free cash approval, and the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Fund retained earnings as of July first, two thousand twenty-five as follows. General Fund: nine million nine hundred fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars. Water Enterprise Fund: two million one hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars. Wastewater Enterprise Fund: one million eight hundred eight thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars. As it pertains to free cash, I am currently working with the Director of Budget and Administration, Mason Lord, as to the most impactful uses of these funds, and anticipate submitting appropriate transfer requests to your honorable body within the next several weeks.
FYI, and I'm going to put that in your committee, Mr. Cobus, in finance.
Sounds good.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the need for funds to cover costs of conducting an HRD Civil Service Assessment Center for the rank of sergeant. This is the formal process which establishes an eligible list of candidates for promotion. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer fifteen thousand dollars from Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one-two-one-zero-one-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-one-zero-one, Police Professional Services.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
For your information, I regret to inform your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Rick Rathburn from the Traffic Study Commission. Please join me in thanking Mr. Rathburn for his service to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Rathburn, for your service, and that's an FYI.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the donation of one seven-by-seven resin storage shed and one ten-by-eight metal storage shed with a combined value of approximately one-thousand-six-hundred-forty-eight dollars from Lowe's Store number one-zero-one-four, thirteen-sixty South Washington Street, North Attleboro, Mass., oh-two-seven-six-zero, to the Capron Park Zoo. In accordance with Section one-dash-twelve of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro.
City property and claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Library Director Amy Rillinger regarding the donation of an outdoor sculptural bench from the Attleboro Arts Museum. This unique piece of outdoor furniture has outlived its usefulness at the Attleboro Arts Museum. In accordance with Section one-dash-twelve of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body accept this generous donation to the City of Attleboro.
City property and claims, please.
I am pleased to inform you that Jessica Spence, licensed social worker, was recently hired as part of the city's opioid settlement fund strategy. As you may recall, the social worker position is fully funded by the city opioid settlement funds. Jessica started her employment with the city on September twenty-ninth and fills the vacancy left by our former social worker, Kate Robinson. She has many years of experience and will work with the pop team to serve residents with opioid use disorder and/or related mental health issues. Jessica will also spend time at the library, patrons, and staff of the Attleboro Public Library, which because of its downtown location and extended building hours, has seen an increase in the number of visitors who have or have had substance use disorder or related mental health issues. Please join me in welcoming Jessica to Team Attleboro.
That's an FYI.
Oh, sorry. Sincerely, Catherine D. Simone.
Thank you. We'll now go on to a reading of the clerk's communication, please.
We have received a letter from clerk's communication, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. We have received a letter from Mr. Timothy Moran formally expressing an ethics complaint regarding Diane and Lori Sawyer.
Copy, all councils, please.
We have received a renewal Class Two license application from Car Town USA Incorporated, six-eighty Washington Street, with nine customer parking spaces and twenty display spaces.
License committee, please.
We have received a renewal Class Two license from Joe and Mary Incorporated, doing business as Gas Plus, eighty Pleasant Street, with ten customer parking spaces and twenty-four display spaces.
License committee, please.
We have received a letter from Vincent Silvio, one-thirty Oakdale Street, with regards to City Councilor Nicholas Lavoy alleging an unfortunate interaction that happened on Mr. Silvio's porch.
Copy all councils, please.
We have received a Class One license renewal application from Courtesy Auto Group Incorporated, doing business as Courtesy Kia Mitsubishi, eleven-and-sixteen Scott Street, with thirty-four customer parking spaces and one-hundred-seventy-two display spaces.
License committee, please.
We have received three petitions from Massachusetts Electric, doing business as National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated, requesting permission to locate and install poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along the following public ways, Dunham Street, all to feed a new medical office building at Sturdy Memorial Hospital.
Public Works Committee, please. And Vice President Dolan, would you like to call for three public hearings the evening of eleven-eighteen?
Yes, please.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
We have received a companion letter from Joe and Silvio, one-thirty Oakdale Street, regarding City Councilor Nicholas Lavoy and her son Vincent Silvio.
Copy all councils, please. We will now go into the committee reports, beginning as always with Mr. Cobus.
Thank you. Reporting for the Finance Committee, from the docket of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, I move to authorize the school department to pay these previous year's school bills totaling ten-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second, second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
Previous year's bill for the school department.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, I move to approve the expenditure of such funds and any future amendments regarding a donation of five-thousand five-hundred dollars from Thrive Downtown Attleboro to purchase wayfinding signage using the Downtown brand.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
It's a donation.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, I move to approve to expending of such funds regarding the anticipated receipt of the Mass Cultural Council grant in the amount of thirty-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars and any future grant amendments in accordance with Chapter One, Section twelve, City Ordinances.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
Previously, this is an anticipated receipt of the grant, and the grant does not require matching funds.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
And from the docket of October seventh, two thousand twenty-five, I move to adopt a dual system of classification of real estate taxation in accordance with appropriate general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Mr. Cobus, any comments?
Would you like me to read this now, or?
Yep, I would read that now, that's fine. I think it's appropriate.
Okay. And I'm going to read a letter that we received from Jack Lank, speaking on behalf of the United Regional Chamber of Commerce. This was a letter that was received in time for the public hearing, but Mr. Lank was not available to speak at that time. He had asked if we'd made a mistake and didn't have a chance to read this, so we're going to go through and read it now to make sure it's read into the record and everyone gets to hear it. But so, this is... But so, this is a letter from Jack Lang on behalf of the United Regional Chamber of Commerce. Reasons to Eliminate a Dual Tax Rate. The United Regional Chamber of Commerce has advocated against a dual tax rate for years. This year, we are asking that you do not shift more of the burden onto the commercial and business community. A dual tax rate raises no additional money for essential town services, none whatsoever. The total tax levy in any city or town in Massachusetts is set by Proposition Two-and-a-Half Regulations and the level of new growth in a city or town. Unfortunately, the way a business is taxed is integrally different from the way residents are taxed, which results in a great deal of confusion. Assessor Julie Hobson has done a fantastic job of explaining the tax classification process and the formulas that are used to determine her findings. The current dual tax system is already neither fair nor equitable for businesses. Businesses must pay toward such items as the city's school system and trash pickup services, which they do not use. Residents have always received a greater value, dollar for dollar, from their tax payments and still do so even now. Under our dual tax rate system, because there is a ratio of approximately eighty-five percent residential housing units and only thirteen percent commercial/business units in Atterboro, if you leave the tax rates as they currently are, the homeowners will only see a small increase in their taxes, whereas businesses would see a raise of some two-and-a-half times that. Almost all local professionals, as well as local businesses, are still trying to recover from COVID-nineteenth pandemic. Supply chain issues increase, increases in costs to goods and services. Trying to find enough workers is a major challenge. Going to any local business, you will find fewer choices on the shelves. Some have limited hours of operation because they can't find enough workers, and adding additional taxes is just not fair. Businesses and professionals have many costs of doing business that are invisible to the consumers, such as ever-increasing insurance costs for property and licensing fees. We all face double-digit healthcare insurance increases. Minimum wage goes up. Unemployment insurance increases are through the roof due to the pandemic and innumerable additional taxes and fees on all levels, city and state and federal. If you look around the city, you will see many underutilized businesses and vacancies, vacancies that are often of a long-term nature. You do not, however, see many houses vacant for long, houses turnover relatively quickly in Atterboro. An increase in the tax rate is a significant sign to new and existing businesses. This city is not business-friendly. What are the taxes? Is often one of the first, if not the first question that new businesses ask when looking to locate in a particular city or town. The current split tax rate is also an incentive to build more residential homes in the city. We are seeing many new single-family homes being built, which further increases the demands and burdens on a city's resources, such as the schools, water, public safety, whereas business growth adds to the tax base without utilizing a lot of these already limited resources. Overcrowding of schools is only one impact. Atterboro does not face competition solely from other in-state communities to attract and retain necessary professionals, businesses, and retail operations. In fact, many states in the country court our existing businesses and offer special incentives for them to relocate there. The state of Rhode Island is actively doing that now. Some eighty percent of U.S. businesses are considered small businesses. Over eighty-five percent of the United Regional Chamber of Commerce members have ten employees or fewer, and many are family-run. Because business taxes are based differently from residential taxes, which are based on real estate property value, when the value of a business goes down, which it often does because of a higher tax rate, commercials and industrial property tax base itself erodes, resulting in fewer and fewer tax dollars emanating from businesses. It is important to note that due to the nature of the commercial tax structure, which is mandated by law, the real value of the very entity that the commercial taxes are determined by often then decreases. Yet the need for critical municipal services, including police, fire, and school departments, is still strong. Many area families are employed by local businesses, and employees suffer when their employer suffers, usually through loss of income and/or benefits. The vast number of local companies contribute greatly to our local youth and civic programs, yet when they are struggling to exist, they often cannot afford to give generously. And if they are out of business or have moved out of town, they will not be here to give anything at all. Assessed real estate values have escalated only because the true worth of residential property values in the city have escalated. Home equity is a real and viable asset to homeowners, and companies doing business in our city should not be penalized because of this. The values of their businesses have traditionally not gone up in times of sluggish national marketplace, but rather down. The United Regional Chamber asks that this honorable body vote to change the current tax rate to make it fair and more equitable for the local businesses and help sustain and not penalize the existing businesses that we have. Thank you for your time, Jack Lang, President and CEO of the United Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Counselor Cobus, do you have additional questions, I mean, additional comments?
I'd just like to comment that this first vote of the two votes is just to adopt a dual class rate system, and I encourage people to support this measure to continue forward with the dual rate system.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Fawa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
No.
So, ten yeas and one nay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And from the docket of October seventh, two thousand twenty-five, I move to adopt a classification factor of one point two four, excuse me, one point four-two for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Yes. I'd like to start by saying, there's a couple factors at play this year. First of all is, as was noted in Mr. Lang's letter, the residential class and residential tax taxes, when you're evaluating the full fair cash value of all residential property in the city, now accounts for eighty-seven percent of the total assessed value of all the property within the city. So, that is growing, and one of the main reasons it's growing is because residential property values continue to increase year over year. In the past four years, each year, the average has gone up by over nine percent. It was nine percent, then twelve percent, then fourteen percent, and then nine percent again this year. So, that's fairly, I mean, that growth rate is not something that's sustainable for us. And as a result of that shrinking class base, shrinking commercial percentage of the overall assessed value, the efficacy and the effectiveness of this tax shift is shrinking. And so, when we talk about shifting by, you know, we'll get into like, should it be one-four-two, one-four-three, like, all those different things, the amount we're shifting is not moving very much and is having very little effect on, like, shifting a percentage of the levy over to the commercial, over to the commercial side. In fact, we're well, we've been well under shifting one percent of the total levy onto commercial. So, I think there's some problems with the policy that we have. I don't think now is the time to get into, like, changing that policy. I think that that's a much longer discussion. So, in the, the policy we have tries to match up the percentage increase in the overall levy with what the average homeowner will see in their tax bill for their property increase. So, for this year, the levy increased by roughly four percent. And in theory, if you think of that as the city's bill and what they have to collect in order to provide the same level, essentially the same level of services, that's what it's going to cost the city, and that's increased by four percent. So, in theory, what would be fair and sort of stable and predictable would be for the residents' average tax bill to increase by roughly four percent as well. And that's, I mean, it's incredibly simplistic, but that's the policy that we've had, and that's allowed for stable increases on the residential side, which accounts for the broader base. It does cause instability on the commercial side, and I get that, but it does provide for relative stability on the residential side. This year, in order to follow the policy, it would require going to a tax shift of one point four-four. That would match the four percent increase on the residential side, and it would then result in an eight percent increase on the commercial side. And that would, the current shift is at one point three-nine, so that would be a fairly dramatic change from where we're currently at. In what we've done in the past, when the policy is called for sort of a bigger shift than what we're kind of comfortable with, we try to take a conservative approach and try not to change things too drastically in any given year. I think continuing on with that policy and that stability and conservative approach makes sense. As a result, I think my suggestion is we stick with one point four-two, which is a fairly, which continues to provide stability for the residents, and, but without shifting too dramatically. And then, I think we, with the shrinking commercial base, we need to review this policy, and we need to adopt, we need to look beyond just the tax shift for how we can support businesses more. We need to look at things like the Thai. We need to, like, not, the city does need to be more business-friendly, and, but that goes well beyond just this tax shift. So, my suggestion is that we stick with one point four-two. I think that's a fair approach that follows the policy that we've had in place for years and years and has provided stability.
Mr. Tavares?
Well, so, I'd like to point out something that I think, well, has been a concern of mine for the last couple of years on the council, is when we look at the value of real estate in terms of residential, commercial, slash, industrial, we see that percentage steadily going down for commercial and up for residential. And I think it's problematic that we're not seeing the value of commercial real estate start to swing the other direction. I think one of the biggest misconceptions is that by keeping the residential rates down long-term, that we're actually doing what's best for the city in the long run. And I think that that can become problematic where we're not seeing a significant increase in our commercial tax base. And the more we can increase that commercial tax base, obviously, the more we can offset the burden on the residences in our city. And, you know, as we took this first vote, even on the dual classification system, I'd love to see one day where, you know, we weren't using this dual classification system, but I think that's too big of a stretch today. And to Counselor Cobus's point, you know, I think reviewing the policy, the tax rate policy that has been set in place for years that we've sort of been using as a rubric and guideline, I think we've got to look at that as well. And I think the theory behind it makes sense, and it's logical in terms of wanting to provide stability year over year. But again, when you go back to the premise of that, the question is, well, when this tax policy, this tax rate policy was enacted, you know, was that the right proportion on day one, right, when we started implementing this tax rate policy? And, you know, if it was, then sure, then the, the change of the, of the rate so as to be consistent with whatever the increase of the value of the real estate is over that particular year to keep stabilization for, you know, residential rates makes sense. But that's, that's been to the detriment, I think, of the commercial base, which is not just a detriment to our local businesses, but also our residents, I think, long-term. So, so that's, that's the bigger issue that I see, and I agree with Counselor Cobus on the fact that we've got to explore other ways to help the small business community. And, you know, I'm disappointed sitting here, looking, you know, thinking through opportunities that we've had as a council here to support small business over the past year, year and a half, two years that I've been here on the council, that we've voted no. So, I think it's important that we look at those opportunities as well, and obviously, this is an important one, but this is just one particular issue that, you know, can address that long-term. And I know that that's just, you know, one side and one facet of what we're doing today when we're talking about the tax rate for these, you know, these various classes across the city, but it's, I think it's an important discussion long-term that we'll have to address.
Additional comments? Mr. Lavoie?
Thank you, President Delicio. I agree with both of you for the most part, and actually, pretty much entirely. You know, I voted yes in favor of the shift system, but part of me wanted to vote no, but I don't know that we're there today to really rehab the whole system. But to me, as a whole, it gives me the feel of, you know, you have a nail in your tire and you just keep filling air just to get by, because we bring this out, and this system's supposed to kind of guide us, and we're like, well, it's too drastic, so we try to find a common ground. It's not really a system that works. But I do think that we need to really clamp down and become more business-friendly. I know there's many councilors here that are against development, have voted against development, rezoning, and, you know, the only way to slow down the need for a bigger tax base from the residential sector is to grow the commercial industrial sector. And the only way we're going to do that is by, you know, being more business-friendly. When you have the Chamber of Commerce tell you that what we're doing is not business-friendly, then it should be pretty eye-opening. You know, I rent commercial property. I know a couple other councilors rent commercial property. And when my lease is up, the first thing I hear about is, yeah, well, the taxes went up, so your rent goes up. There's no way out of that. So, you know, you're directly impacting small businesses with every little shift. A sizable impact that directly comes down to myself, to other councilors, other business owners in the city, large or small, and renters for that matter. So, I think it's, and also ratepayers for electrical and gas delivery. So, it's not just a picture of, well, the big businesses and the landlords foot the bill. No, the little guy and the ratepayers will foot the bill. And so, we really just have to become far more smarter than we've been, and I think really sit down and take a hard look and come up with some solutions rather than reactions. Thank you.
Counselor Reynolds?
You know, there's no real winner. You know, the increase, the assessment of city property that causes the increase in your tax is going to continuously go up. So, and we have an aging population that isn't working, that isn't making a lot of money. And they're seeing, you know, what might be five hundred one year, then the next year it's a thou, you know, they add it up, and, you know, some people are paying ten thousand, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand on their property that they thought they were going to be able to live in for the rest of their life. So, as much as I have also feeling for the business community, there just is no winner here, no matter which way we go with it, even keeping it at one point four-two. You know, a few years back, I would have even said, jump it to the one point four-four, which doesn't really make a big change because of the increase in the assessment of the property in general. So, we're talking, in the long run, pennies that we're helping people save because the assessment has gone up on property. So, I don't see where we can go, or go to a one rate. I just don't see that we could, I just don't see how we could do it. And even at one point four-two, it's just never enough for the homeowner. It's just not enough. And the rates of water have gone up, electric, as you were talking about. There's just, there's just a struggle in everybody's life at every angle. And I think we only can do the most that we can do and divvy it up and hope for the best, but we can beleaguer it, it's not going to change. It's not going to change anything. Everybody's hurting on both sides, and that's, those are my. And that's, those are my comments.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Vice President Dolan, I need to give up the seat.
President Delicio?
Thank you. So as mentioned this evening, tax classification is one of the most difficult votes we face every year. Ultimately, we're deciding how to distribute the burden of a tax increase across all classes of taxpayers, residential, commercial, and industrial. I've always tried to prioritize protecting our residents, especially those on fixed incomes, from bearing too much of that burden. At the same time, we must consider the long-term impact of placing too heavy a load on our commercial and industrial taxpayers. If we overburden our business community, we risk driving them out of Attleboro. And when businesses leave, the share of the tax levy they have once covered shifts to residents. We've seen this happen elsewhere. Look at Pawtucket, Hasbro, one of its largest employers left for Boston. While I don't know what that full financial impact is going to be yet on Pawtucket, I'm confident it will be significant and residents there will feel that impact. I don't want to see that happen in Attleboro. We have major infrastructure needs on the horizon. Now is the time to strengthen our commercial and industrial tax base. Growing that sector will help support a balanced budget in the future without unfairly shifting the cost onto the residents. This is why I don't support a split tax rate for Attleboro. A split tax rate might have made sense in the 1970s when we had large manufacturers here, but that's no longer our economic reality. Actually, that did happen in Attleboro when Balfour, TI, Jostens, all left Attleboro. That was a major impact to Attleboro's economy. But I do recognize, we're not there yet, we're not there at this point, that would be too heavy of a pendulum swing, and I understand that, but at least we're having the conversation, which I've sat in this horseshoe for a long time, and we've never even had that piece of the conversation. We should be focused, excuse me, we should be focused on attracting and retaining businesses. By doing so, we will not only protect our residential taxpayers, but also set Attleboro up for long-term financial stability. Council Cobus has mentioned tonight by you, Mr. Tavares, Mr. Lavoy, I also feel the existing policy may be outdated. It's time to revisit our long-term tax policy from 2012 and look at how this policy is relevant or not, how the city has changed over the last 14 years, 13 years, which includes COVID-19, and as such, how we plan for our future. Thank you. One thing I will say, and I will give up the seat again, I was glad to see it go from 1.44 to 1.42. I'd like to see it go lower, but I think it's a fair compromise for where we are this evening. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll do a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
No.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
No.
President Delicio?
No.
All right. We have eight yays and three nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I'd like to move to business for the Biden's committee, I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Very much, Councilor Foa?
The IKN Infrastructure Committee has no business this evening, I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Councilor Lavoy?
Thank you, President Delicio. The License Committee has no business for this evening, we call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. Reporting for Public Works Committee, I have four motions this evening. From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to transfer $120,000 from account wastewater enterprise fund reserve for capital to account wastewater enterprise fund F550 services truck or similar to purchase a 2025 F55 dump truck.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No comments, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Tavares?
Uh, Mr. Tavares, I'm sorry.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to transfer $12,649.09 from account recreation supplies equipment to account recreation blower to purchase a stand-on hurricane blower.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote this time, and I mean it, we'll begin with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to transfer $2,340.63 from account water enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer to account water enterprise fund bills from previous years to pay a, pay two fiscal year 2025 invoices from Tata and Howard.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to approve the request of National Grid in Verizon, New England to relocate and replace P8155 on Payson Street.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Any comments?
None.
Okay, additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
We have eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to transfer $187.50 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account fire previous year bills to pay a fiscal year 25 invoice from Island Tech Services.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
We have eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to transfer $412.76 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account fire previous year bills to Debbie's Uniform and Supply for Fiscal Year 24 and Fiscal Year 25 invoices.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
We have eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of September 2nd, 2025, I move to amend the revised ordinance of City of Attleboro as follows. Strike section nine dash 35.2 in its entirety and replace with the following.
Second.
Yeah. Do you want me to just do that, little sections or?
Uh, no, just, um...
Like the amend section, strike?
Yeah, just read down to the animal control officer under the direct...
Okay. The animal control officer, under the direct supervision of the police chief and under the general control of the mayor, shall perform the following duties.
Now we'll waive the rest of the reading.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Dolan, motion is in order, any comments?
Just a few comments. Thank you. So basically, we heard from Derek Corsi, and I know that the police chief did show up, but we started the meeting a little earlier than expected. So this would be to change the animal control officer to be connected to the police department versus the superintendent of parks. It did sound like it made sense because at times, he is even overwhelmed with the reporting, so it does seem to make sense to be with the police department. So that concludes my comments.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
We have eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That's all the business for the public works committee, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Council Reynolds, I errantly skipped you after.
I know, it's all right. It's okay.
I will recognize you.
Yes, no, we have no business city property and claims, but I would like to call a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
My apologies.
No worries.
Council Holmes?
Thank you. Reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, from the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to transfer $187.50 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account fire previous year bills to pay a fiscal year 25 invoice from Island Tech Services.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
We have eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to transfer $412.76 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account fire previous year bills to Debbie's Uniform and Supply for Fiscal Year 24 and Fiscal Year 25 invoices.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motions in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
We have eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of September 2nd, 2025, I move to amend the revised ordinance of City of Attleboro as follows. Strike section nine dash 35.2 in its entirety and replace with the following.
Second.
Yeah. Do you want me to just do that, little sections or?
Uh, no, just, um...
Like the amend section, strike?
Yeah, just read down to the animal control officer under the direct...
Okay. The animal control officer, under the direct supervision of the police chief and under the general control of the mayor, shall perform the following duties.
Now we'll waive the rest of the reading.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Dolan, motion is in order, any comments?
Just a few comments. Thank you. So basically, we heard from Derek Corsi, and I know that the police chief did show up, but we started the meeting a little earlier than expected. So this would be to change the animal control officer to be connected to the police department versus the superintendent of parks. It did sound like it made sense because at times, he is even overwhelmed with the reporting, so it does seem to make sense to be with the police department. So that concludes my comments.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
We have eleven yays and zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That's all the business for the public works committee, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Council Reynolds, I errantly skipped you after.
I know, it's all right. It's okay.
I will recognize you.
Yes, no, we have no business city property and claims, but I would like to call a committee
Thank you. Um, Mr. Angelo.
Thank you, President Delicio, reporting for Special Committee on Classification Conversation. For the docket of August 19th, 2025, move the amendment following section of the revised ordinance of City of Attleboro as indicated below, amend sections 13-3 classification plan and 13-4 compensation plan by adding the following, Assistant Director of Planning and Development, Assistant Director of Budget Administration, Chief of Staff, DSM.
Now we'll wait for the reading of the what, of the rest. And who was that second, I'm sorry? Thank you Vice President Dolan, motions in order, any comments?
So, um, basically, we talked a lot about this in committee, but also, uh, we had Public Karen, uh, we had Mr. Erashin come up, we had Mason Lord come up, explaining, um, you know, a secession plan, which also, uh, this special committee was originated by our honorable body for things like this and for other issues facing, uh, the city employees. So, um, so it does, so for, you know, Director of Planning and Development, Assistant Director of Planning and Development, we had Mr. Erashin that came up and spoke, and, uh, spoke for a considerable length, and we all see the amount of time Gary puts in, and the hard work that he does, and, um, and, and maybe, you know, there's many things that we could be missing out on that he can't get to, on maybe grants for the city, and, uh, and, and, and I will say all these are not funded, uh, they, and if they do get funded in the future at some point, uh, we will have that opportunity to vote yea or nay on that separately as we go. Um, so that's for all of these. Uh, and we also have some positions that are in the City of Attleboro, uh, that are there, that are not funded, and that, in my, in my world, and in my planning, I think this is all good planning, to have that there just in case at some point where the funding does come, then the administration come on down and get approval from the City Council. So, um, so I firmly believe this is the way to do it, this is how we do it in my world. We're putting, we do, um, we do a lot of study and a lot of reasons on why we want to put a position in there, we get a position in there, and then at some point we decide, okay, this is, uh, now we can fund this position, fund that position as we go. Uh, sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't happen, and this is, uh, the administration's, um, actions on planning to have this, if at some point in time in the future it does. So, um, we got Planning and Development, um, uh, we got Budget Administration, uh, we've seen, uh, what's happened with Mason Lord and Deb Gould, and, uh, and, and how important it is to possibly at some point have that. Uh, and then we have the Chief of Staff as well too, and I read through a bunch of cities that have Chief of Staffs, uh, and there's a very extensive list of that too as well. And, um, and a lot of these can be that, uh, maybe there's certain things that we're missing, um, you know, for say even the Chief of Staff, it could be that, uh, the Mayor is being pulled in this meeting, that meeting, that meeting, and then there's other things that, uh, we got some citizens that they just can't get help with, or they can't get someone to talk to on, uh, and, and it might help to be, have that extra person. So, there's a lot of positives for all of these, and, you know, the one negative for all of them is, it's gonna cost the city money. So sometimes you gotta spend money to make money, but at the same time, again, I'm gonna caution everybody, we are not funding these right now, this is just to have it there, just in case funding comes on an individual basis, and it'll come on down, so I encourage, you know, all councilors, if, you know, if you're okay with us planning for the future, this is a good thing to have, and then, um, that's about it.
Mr. Cobus, and Vice President Dolan.
Thank you, President Delicio. Uh, I'm supportive of this measure, I would not be if we were paying for these people and hiring these people today, but I recognize that this is just putting them on the books so that we can hire them later, and that we will have a chance to approve the expenditure to, for any of these individuals at, at a later date if we decide to, to then hire somebody for these roles. Um, and I agree with what Councilor Angelo said about it, it, it is incredibly difficult to quantify the, the lost opportunity costs to the city, um, that, that we've incurred by not having these individuals, but who knows what we're missing as far as grants that, that, you know, if we had, if we weren't stretched so thin, what, what grants could we have applied for and whatnot? So, I wouldn't support this if we were hiring these people today, we, we don't have it at the budget, but I am supportive of putting them on the books so that at a later date when, when and if we have the funds available, um, we, we can then fill these roles.
Vice President Dolan.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with everything that Council Angelo and Council Cobus said, and what Council Angelo said about, you know, we do have jobs, job descriptions in the classification plan that aren't funded, that are new, uh, like the new MIS position that we voted on, the new lab manager at the Water Department that we voted on, and I think that the Mayor's position, the Mayor's Assistant Chief of Staff, I think that's already on the books, they're just changing the name to Chief of Staff, and then just summarizing, you know, the, um, the qualifications that the person would need. Um, so yeah, I, I, I definitely support this, you know, we're, we're just prepping, and hopefully someday we will be able to fill these because they are, they are critical positions, and, um, and again, I know when Mr. Erashin spoke, and we all know how hard he works, and, and we could be missing out. But again, this isn't really to discuss the merits of the position, so I, I support this.
Councilor Sawyer.
I, I also support this, I think that, um, if we have to go through all of this in order to get them on the books when we really need them, then time would be wasting. So I think that it definitely is a good time to do this, when we, just to put them on the books, so that when we do need it, and we are ready to find it, then it's there. So I do agree.
Councilor Angelo.
Thank you, President Delicio. Thank you, Council, Vice President Dolan, for reminding me because, um, uh, I completely forgot to add that it is, Chief of Staff is on the books. Um, it, that was part of my, uh, the reason why I kinda went back, um, I had wanted to see a little bit different wording on that, um, so I requested for it to, to, to go back because I wanted the description to be a little bit more so that, you know, either you had a, um, a bachelor's or job equivalency, because I didn't want to exclude someone that didn't have a bachelor's but had the equivalency, because I've seen many times, again, and I always, I know I say this and I apologize, but in my world, I've seen many people that are incredibly qualified, that didn't have a degree, but they had tons of experience over the years. So that was the one reason why I had sent that back, to have that changed, uh, but other than that, it's, uh, it's going, hopefully it'll be fine.
Mr. Lavoy.
Thank you, President Delicio. Uh, this is one I've gone back and forth on, what feels like a month or longer now. Um, for a point in time, I supported this because I had met with the Mayor, felt a bit better about these positions, but on the same end, last week, we all get an email stating that the fiscal year '27 budget looks dark and gloomy, and that, you know, basically it was like buckle up. So, for me, from my perspective, I just think of the optics, and I don't think it's a good look when, who knows what fiscal year '27 will look like. I think if we create positions and, and potentially lay off city employees, that's a pretty bad look. And so I think, if you're asking me, I'd like to see this come back once we pass a balanced budget with no layoffs again in fiscal year '27, or for fiscal year '27 rather, uh, and then I'd be happy to take a look at it and vote on them, understanding again that we're not funding them. It's more a matter of when we're talking about the days ahead, we're talking about rising healthcare costs, concerns, these are things that I look at when making a vote, because when I say yes, we're telling the taxpayers, we're creating these, we hope to fill them at some point. So I, I don't think that I make the case and the argument that I, I support creating positions when we don't even know if we're gonna retain all of our city employees come the next budget year. And so, to me, very cautious when trying to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Uh, Council Holmes and Council Waterman.
Thank you. I think, um, that these positions, we have to be creative in these times, and some of the positions have to do with looking for grants, grant writing, uh, we have to be savvy with bringing more funds to the city, and we've, we even are planning, um, Department had told us, like, there is grants out there that we could be going after that we're potentially losing, so I think that the opportunity, we, we don't wanna cut off our nose to spite our face, we have to kind of be creative and savvy with, um, thinking about how we can bring additional funds to Attleboro. So, having it on the books isn't costing us anything, and to Council Sawyer's point, then we have it there if, if the opportunity does, does come up, but, um, so I, I understand the concerns and, and the optics, but I also think that it is in the best interest of the city to approve, to, um, to approve this. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Ms. Angelo.
Uh, thank you, um, Council Holmes, uh, very well said, very good points. Um, uh, so if we're uncomfortable, uh, well, one, I haven't heard about any layoffs, that's always possible in any world, that could happen, I haven't heard about any layoffs at all, uh, and I hope that never happens. Um, uh, but if, if we're not comfortable with this, then we, then we should go ahead after this, uh, and review other positions that are on there, and maybe pull those off too, and don't have them on the book too as well, because that, we're contradicting what we're saying here, if, uh, if we're not gonna allow these to have on the books, then let's get all the other ones off the books too as well. Um, uh, so maybe we'd look at that too, uh, but that's all I have to say.
Vice President Dolan, uh, Council Reynolds, and Vice President Dolan.
You know, I, I look at this as like a business plan, if you were starting your own, the city is a business, if you were starting your own business and you were going to the bank to borrow money, they would wanna know who you were, who, who you would want to be running the company. That's all this is, is what do we think we need here in the city, and we've been talking about this for years, three or four, maybe five years, uh, it came up, and, and we've been looking at it and looking at it, and, um, we knew this was coming down. Again, we went to a meeting, you know, a, a year and a half ago, I think it was, to determine some of this. So we're basically saying, to run this city properly, these are the people that need to be in addition on the classification plan, that's all we're saying, these are the people that need to be there, and if we were very lucky, everybody on that classification plan and every unit of available person would be hired. We know that isn't gonna happen because we don't have the money, but that doesn't mean that you don't wanna have a business plan. So, for me, I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Vice President Dolan. Mr. Waterman, I apologize.
It's all right. So I, I just wanna second what Councilor Angelo said about the, um, position of Mayor Chief of Staff. I think he's, I think he's thinking correctly when we shouldn't hamstring ourselves necessarily with a degree if somebody comes along who's got the kind of experience that applies to that position. So I, I applaud that, that approach.
Vice President Dolan.
Thank you. Uh, so, you know, when, when we talk about optics, and we have the Sun Chronicle in the audience tonight, so if, if they, if they write something, you know, it's not about optics, it's about the truth. So the truth is, we are adding these to a classification plan, and they're going to sit there until the city can afford to fund it. If the city cannot afford, we have not had layoffs in, I don't even know how many years. I know that, you know, the administration and the prior administration has, the current administration, the prior administration worked really hard at not laying people off, tight budgets regardless. But we all care, we all care about the rising health costs, I mean, we're all part of it, I mean, regardless of where we work and, and what we do, we're all a part of everything that's rising, electric, everything. So, when the Sun Chronicle writes it, I'm sure they're gonna make it clear that we're not funding these positions, we're just putting them on a plan, and then someday, if we're all happy and we're rolling in the dough, we'll be able to fill all of them, one of them, none of them, whatever the case may be. But, it's, it's not about optics, you know, when we're concerned about the Assistant Superintendent of DPW, it doesn't mean that position's gonna be filled, it's just not filled right now. We're not filling these positions, we're just putting them on the paper. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Lavoy.
Thank you, President Delicio. Um, Council Holmes, you bring up great points, and I think if this was a grant writing position, I would tell you to pass it and find ways to fund it today, because that is in my mind a profitable position. What I mean by that is they're gonna save the taxpayer far more than the taxpayer is gonna pay out for that position. So, um, I've always wondered why we don't have one, um, at the very least, why we're not reaching out and getting interns who are in college to do that very degree and that, uh, choice of career. But, when we're talking about this speci, uh, specific one, I don't think taking back positions is sensible, you know, yeah, if they're already on the books, that's great, we can pay for them, but I don't see the need to add more at this very second, is what I'm saying, because we didn't fund two positions, whether we find meaningful ways to handle those, great, but we're talking about cities and towns across the Commonwealth that are doing overrides to pay for health insurance, salaries, school budgets, that are just not passing balanced budgets, layoffs across the Commonwealth. Thankfully, it hasn't happened here in Attleboro, but I don't know that telling the taxpayers of Attleboro, we're gonna create three more positions when we're battling to make sure layoffs don't happen. I don't know that that's a good look, I don't care if, you know, maybe some people don't think optics matter. I think the form of government and the presentation we give to the taxpayers of Attleboro matters to me, I don't care if it matters to anybody else, but for me, I wanna make sure that everybody in Attleboro feels like their government's working for them, is transparent for them. So I think most people at home would think, well, why are we creating positions we're not gonna fill? Everyone here has said for the foreseeable future, we're talking years out, maybe we'll pay for them. So why the need to put them on the books today and add to the growing list of job openings that we're not filling? Let's worry about balancing a budget, creating sensible government moving forward. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Reynolds.
I just have, I just have to comment on this. I mean, we are being transparent, we're talking about it, we're saying it's a business plan, that's all it is. So we are being more than transparent, we're not hiding anything, we're saying that if we could afford to fund every job description that belongs in the city plan, these are the subadditional positions we need, that is all, we are saying, we are being more than transparent, and that is, that's the end of my comments.
Ms. Angelo.
Uh, thanks, President, I just, one more thing, and in no way would I ever, ever be okay with removing things off the books, I was just trying to use as, as an example, and that's it, that's all I have to say.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Would like to give up the seat again?
President Delicio.
Thank you. So this is a great conversation, I think this is the type of conversation we should be having, um, and I'm always happy to see change. Are these important positions? Yes, but where I struggle is, why create them and not fund them when there's a time, let's do it all at the same time. I'm not sure about layoffs either, but what I am sure about is there is certainly financial instability and uncertainty on our horizon, we have to think about this. I think that also, at budget time, we talked a lot about other positions we wanted to see filled, and we were told come free cash time, and, you know, towards the end of fiscal year, middle, uh, calendar year rather, we would talk about those. I haven't heard any conversations about those. Um, at any point, any mayor can appoint someone for a 90-day appointment, once these positions are created. So, to me, it's kinda caught before the horse at this point. Um, all of these, I would like to see, especially the Assistant Director of Planning, I'd like to see it filled and come down, because it is important. But I also think that, um, we don't know to talk about the grants, we don't know what grants are gonna be available, if we're reading the news, it's not a lot of grants that, that are gonna still continue to be available, there's a lot that are being taken away and just discontinued. To me, I think it's a good plan, I'm not against these positions, but why are we talking about them before we're funding them? I think we need to talk about the ones that are already open, the ones that we talked about in the springtime, that we were told we would have the discussions about before we start to look to noon. But again, I wanna stress that I think that of all of these, to me, the most important is the Assistant Director of Planning, so that concludes my comments. Council Foa.
Thank you, President Delicio, I believe, I, I certainly support, uh, the creation of these positions. I believe that we are dancing on a knife edge with, uh, the structure that we currently have, with no backup for really important positions. Somebody gets sick, somebody leaves, we are without recourse. I think Council Sawyer's point was excellent. Let's put in place now what we need so that in the event of, uh, an emergency, in the event that we have the cash, in any event, we have the structure available, as Council Reynolds said, so that we can go forward with, um, the city's business. I think this is an excellent proposal, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Cobus.
Uh, Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
No.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Tavares.
No.
President Delicio.
No.
Right, so we have eight yays and three nays.
Thank you, motion passes. There's no old business, there's one piece of new business for which we will recognize Council Foa.
Thank you, President Delicio, I believe that it would be useful to the council to know in advance of a meeting what matters from committees are going to be brought out. Right now, we don't have any way of knowing that, and so I have, uh...
Can you please read the motion?
Certainly. That municipal council shall notify the council administrator of his or her designated meet, as to those items any council reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the municipal council meeting for which an agenda is prepared. Such items shall be marked on the agenda prepared by the administrator as subject to discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's in order, now any more comments?
In order to be prepared and to have intelligent conversation about matters that are brought before the council, I believe we need to, to know at the earliest possible time, but certainly before the actual meeting of council, what is going to be discussed. Simple as that.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Lavoy.
Chair, or through the President, if I may, are, are you referring to, like, pieces of business within a committee if they're gonna be brought out or not, or is this more broad than that?
I am talking about matters that will be, uh, brought before the council, not before, I'm not talking about committee meetings, I'm talking about city council, meeting as council, so that we know.
Vice President Dolan.
Thank you. So, I think you might mean committee, I, I, I know when I read this, this is, this is what I think of, like, to be prepped for a discussion. So typically, uh, you know, everybody usually votes everything out, ordinances takes longer, so ordinances will hold on to things, um, because, you know, it requires extensive research and such. So I, I agree in the sense of, if we're having a committee meeting and then we're like, oh hey, by the way, the, you know, whatever ordinance is come, um, we're gonna discuss it next week, or something like that. So I agree with you in that sense, like, I don't know, I can't think of anything big, but something big that, you know, you're not digging through your stuff from like November, I'm in my bag, like, trying to, to have a good discussion on something, I think, does require, like, a little heads up or something like that. I'm not how, not sure how we would implement this exactly, um, I guess it can be looked into, but I do agree with the point of, you know, if, if a counselor could give the courtesy, like, hey, we're bringing out this big whatever, we're gonna talk about it next week, that's a good heads up to me, that I can have everything prepped. But, I don't know how we would implement this exactly, um, that concludes my comments.
Additional questions, comments, concerns on this? One more time.
President Delicio.
Thank you. So I am not in favor of this piece of business, um, I think that Virginia works hard, and, you know, there are weeks that she'll send out emails and we won't even hear back from, uh, people. Um, I also think that, to Vice President Dolan's point, you know, we'll have this for the full council because we'll know what's coming out because we were at the committee meetings the week before. I also think that this is, is just total overreach, I mean, there's so many reasons why people hold on to things in committee, the strategic reasons is, as, um, Vice President Dolan used, I think, ordinances is a really good one, uh, finance is a good one, sometimes we, we've gotta get the comments to these. Uh, for me, I just don't see the need for this at this point, I think it's, it's just too much. I mean, when I was, before I was president and I was committee chair, I read the agenda, and I had the backup for every other committee, and I knew what was on the people's agendas, because I could see it, and I was prepared if those conversations come up. To me, I, I think this, the fundamental part of our job is being prepared for whatever comes up, so I, I can't support this. Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Council Reynolds.
So I guess, I, I, I go along with, um, President Delicio, because when we, when we get this, and we get one every, every week, it has what's on everybody's, you know, what's on everybody's agenda and what they're talking about, so there is no reason you couldn't actually even call the committee chair and say, hey, I'm looking at this, and I'm really interested in such and such, and are you bringing that out? They say yes or no, they don't have to, you know, have a hour-long conversation, but if, if there's anything ever on here that, you know, really hits me in the face that I wanna really talk about, I, I, I have the research, I've done it, it's there for when it does come out. So, I do think, even from my ears here, you know, you know what's going on, you know when it's coming out, and if you don't, then you're just not paying attention and you've got issues. So that's, that's my comment.
Mr. Cobus.
Based on how this is written currently... Based on how this is written currently, I don't think I would support it either, but that's not what's before us, what's before us now, is whether or not to allow this into committee, at all, and my personal view is that, that we should allow things to come in, and maybe once, once it comes into committee, it will evolve into something that, that I could get behind, so my personal perspective is, I, I'm going to support allowing it to come into committee, and then see where it goes from there, and then whether or not I support it, if it comes before the full council, is another, another thing, but I, I don't like the idea of squashing things at this point, is my, is my personal view.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this one.
Sure. Starting with Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
No.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
President Delisio.
No.
We have 9 yeas and 2 nays.
Motion passes, that'll be assigned to Special Committee on Rules and Procedures. Where there's no new business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourned at 8:15.